All right, good evening, everybody. Thanks for your patience. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:09 PM. This is a meeting of the Charter Review Committee for the sole purpose of having a public hearing in order to hear from the public about their ideas, feelings, and impressions about the city charter. This meeting is being recorded by the Charter Review Committee. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Is there anyone else that's attending the meeting that's recording this meeting separately? Okay, thank you. I'm going to do a roll call. Counselor Gilmore.
Here.
Counselor Forghee.
Here.
Counselor Wheeler.
Here.
Erin Donnelly Drake.
Here.
John Lunt. David Singer. And Alan Woods. I can't get into your... Oh, Al can't get into the meeting? Well. All right. And Alan Woods is going to come in by phone. Al, I don't know what to do. I have to keep going with the meeting. I don't know why you can't attend, but you can attend by phone if you can hear me, so why don't you call into the meeting?
Al wants to come to my house. He can do that.
We can't hear you, Al. You're on mute, so you might want to unmute. You're in the meeting.
I can hear you. So.
All right. And Al had sent me a note that he couldn't get into the meeting. Al, you're on mute.
Okay.
Not you, Al Woods, Al Norman. All right. All right, I'm going to keep going. Accept the minutes. We're not having a meeting where we will accept the accepting minutes. So we have a public hearing. I think before we start the public hearing, let me talk about what this group is about and what this hearing, what the relatively easy ground rules will be for the meeting itself. So the charter that's currently in place in Greenfield was voted upon by the residents of the city of Greenfield in 2002 or thereabouts, and has been in place ever since, and it changed our form of government from a select board with a city council to a strong mayoral form of government, again with the city council as a legislative body. In the charter itself, it requires that a committee be formed on any year ending in zero. The purpose of that provision in this charter is to ensure that even if the city, for any reason, hasn't looked at the charter within the 10-year period between the years ending in zero, then the charter orders us to do so. So sometimes it happens in between that a charter provision comes up for amendment, and sometimes it doesn't. But at this point, this committee was formed to listen to ourselves, which our group is comprised of three city councilors and four citizens, and also to listen to the public, and also to listen to the departments and other groups that participate within our city government. Let's see. At the end of the day, we will... Our meetings are public. You're welcome to attend. But at the end of the day, we are an advisory group. We are not a commission. We are an advisory group. So what we will do is, we will go over all the requested changes that come in from the outside, maybe some things that we think ourselves might need changing through our discussions. And we will file a report by the end of the year with the city council, and the city council then can take it up next year and decide which of the recommendations they would like to discuss. And that'll be a time when illegally, things can begin to change. So that people understand the charter cannot be amended... The charter can be amended only by very specific means. The mayor and the city council have to agree if that's the form of the amending or changing, and there are some things by statute that cannot be changed without going to the voters. So again, we're only going to make recommendations, and I'm sure when the city council reads our report and decides which things they would like to bring forward, you folks again will be able to attend public hearings and discuss with the city council, you know, what your feelings are about any of the changes that they proposed. I'm going to... I have not yet been able to become adept at this WebEx teleconferencing, but I have the esteemed Otis Wheeler as the vice chair, and he's going to host the meeting. So I guess I'm going to let Otis speak to all of you about how you can let us know that you want to speak, and then we will give you time to speak. I'm happy it's been suggested to me, and I think it's a good suggestion. I'm happy to give people five minutes to speak because I know some people have a lot to say about their... what they think about the charter and some of the proposed changes that they're proposing. So anyway, I'll pass this along to you, Otis, so you can help people get in the queue in.
Thanks, David. So everyone, if you're logged in through WebEx, through the software, there's a chat window on the right, and please use the chat to just write your name in if you'd like to speak during the public comment. And I will keep track of who is up next to speak, and we'll go one by one. You'll have five minutes, like the chair said. If you're a phone user, if you called into this meeting and you'd like to speak at public comment, please just interrupt in between speakers to let us know you'd like to speak, or wait till the other ones have spoken, either way. And we'll be sure to hear from all of you. And when you speak, please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
All right, let the record show that at 6:15, I've opened up the meeting. I've opened up the public hearing. Who would like to send a request to speak?
Mr. Chair, Susan Worgaftik is first in the list.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
Thank you very much.
Please give us your name and your address.
My name is Susan Worgaftik. I live at 45 Forest Avenue, Greenfield. Following presentation is from Luis Amio, Dave Cohen.
Excuse me for... Susan, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Can everybody mute except for Susan? Pam, I see you're not... I hear some people typing, so if you... Just because it... Like, I can't hear, and I don't think others can hear what Susan has to say. Thanks. Go ahead, Susan. Start again.
Thank you. Okay. The following presentation is from Luis Amio, David Cohen, Peg Hall, Edie Heineman, Rebecca King, Carol Letson, Jan Mayer, Dorothy MacGyver, Doug Selwyn, Patricia Williams, and myself, all Greenfield residents. Let me see if I can get... Okay. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to the changes in the Greenfield town charter. We would like to consider five issues: the number of councilors on the city council, the chair of the school committee, the Public Safety Commission, citizen referendum procedures, and review of Greenfield ordinances. On Article 2, Section 2-1, the draft that the commission has made available to the community most recently changes the number of at-large councilors from four to two. First of all, we do not understand why this is even being suggested. We don't know of any community grounds felt to make this change, but perhaps we missed it. In any case, we find this to be highly democratic, and we have heard that there is some belief that we have more councilors than a community of this size needs. We don't know what that means. In representative democracy, the more voices that can be part of the process, the better. We know that there has been concern on the council for a need for more diversity. An effort to raise the stipend for councilors from 2,000 to 4,000 per year was put through to help respond to the needs for childcare and travel expenses of councilors. Of course, if you really want to deal with the need for the diversity, the stipend would have to be $10,000 or more to allow someone to give up a part-time job to become a counselor. That is an unlikely possibility in the present economy. We understand that. So since we can't provide a greater stipend for councilors, we would give them more time. At the present time, councilors often have to be on several committees, and that involves a lot of time, study, and energy on top of responding to constituent needs and questions and the regular council meetings. So if it is assumed that the time commitment of councilors is preventing people from becoming councilors, then we need more councilors, not fewer. Our suggestion is to increase the number of at-large councilors from four to six. This would allow councilors to concentrate on fewer committee assignments and decrease the time commitment for each counselor. And it would also increase the democracy by allowing more voices to enter the discussion. A 15-person council is not any more unwieldy than one of 13. On Article 4, Section 1A, the school committee. In this section, it allows the mayor to become the chair of the school committee. It is perfectly reasonable to have the mayor on the school committee, particularly in regard to budgetary concerns. Allowing the mayor to become chair of the school committee is an unnecessary concentration of power in one individual. By dint of his or her position as mayor, the mayor already wields a level of authority in the school committee that other members of the committee do not have. This change in the charter would be another example of narrowing of democracy rather than expanding it. We believe that this should not be included in the charter revisions. Article 6, Section 611, Public Safety Commission. There's a great deal of discussion about the need for an independent police review board. This requires a great deal of consideration, and we would suggest that the council create a commission with a broadly defined membership, including formerly incarcerated individuals, to discuss this issue and report back to the council within a year. But that is not the subject of this charter commission. In Section 611, parentheses I, of the charter, it states that the members of the Public Safety Commission shall be considered special municipal employees. What does that mean? If it means that they are aligned with the concerns of city government, then that creates a conflict of interest when people bring complaints to the commission, and the commission is charged with, and I quote, "investigating complaints and holding hearings concerning complaints made to it regarding the operation of the police or fire department and the conduct of officers and employees of each department," which is Section 611, parentheses E. If this designation does not mean that there is a conflict of interest, what does it mean, and how is it different from other commissions? In addition, we would like to suggest that at minimum, the requirements of the membership in the commission become more specific, including at least one person of color, one woman, and no more than one former member of the police or fire departments. If we have a truly independent police review board, all these issues and more will become part of the charter. In the meantime, these changes can ensure a bit more equity within a board that, as written, is supposed to have oversight over the police and fire.
Susan?
Yes.
Let me just say this. Your five minutes are up, but I want to... You're on a roll.
Okay.
So Otis, how many people have queued up to do this?
So far, we have three more after Susan.
Okay. And I'm going to be liberal with letting people speak longer. I know you're reading from the report that you gave. I also, Susan, want to tell you this, and I forgot to say this in my introductory remarks. Nothing has been changed in the charter. I noticed in the attachment to the meeting that the clerk's office has started to make changes to the charter and redline it, which was not an instruction that was given to them, but I think they misunderstood what I had done. So please understand, there's been no changes in the charter. So the initial concern that you had about why are things being changed, nothing's been changed. The charter is as you see it, but we've been given recommendations, and I started to note for the rest of the council, the suggestions, which I will do for the report that you gave us today. But I want everybody to understand in the community, nothing has been changed. So anything you saw was a recommendation, just like yours. So please continue.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the extra time. I truly appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Section 7-8, Citizen Referendum Petitions. During the last year and a half or so, there's been a great deal of discussion about the vagueness of the citizen referendum petition process whereby citizens can put reversal of a decision made by either the council or the school committee onto the ballot. We believe that this process should be available to the populace. It requires, however, a recognition that we have elected this council and school committee to represent us, and that this effort to overturn council decisions is a serious matter. We therefore would like to suggest the following. A petition can be submitted to the city clerk as described in 7-8, parentheses A. Once the petition has been verified by the clerk, then following 7-7, parentheses B, is appropriate. Where we differ is on the number of signatures needed and the percentage in 7-7C. Rather than asking for a percentage of the registered voters, we would suggest that the requirement be that 100 valid signatures of registered voters from each precinct be collected and verified before such a referendum can be allowed on the ballot. Our reasoning is that, under the present system, and that's suggested in the draft, and I'm sorry, I don't understand, a relatively small group of people for a very small section of the city can go to their friends for signatures, and those people from only one portion of the city can demand a vote from everyone. Under our suggestion, there would have to be some recognition that this is an issue of importance to at least some people throughout the city. People who gather signatures would not only have to talk to their friends, but also talk to people they don't know who live in other parts of the city. They would have to explain why it is important to override the council or the school committee on that question that is on the table and convince them to sign the petition. By doing that, they have demonstrated that this is an issue that should be on the ballot for all the city to consider. And one additional thing that has not been part of the charter. We would suggest that in fiscal year ending in 2, the council would appoint a three-person committee, including one lawyer, a council, and a resident to review the city's ordinances to ensure that there are no prejudicial, antiquated, or otherwise outdated or no longer useful ordinance active in Greenfield. Within one year, the committee will report back to the council with a list of those ordinances which are no longer appropriate for action by the council. Because in our city's and our country's history, ordinances that are not generally used are sometimes unearthed to harass citizens who are seen as out of favor, not one of us, politically unacceptable, or otherwise seen as out of the norm. It's important for Greenfield to review our active ordinance list and clear it of such ordinances. By keeping the ordinance list current and appropriate, we will be more confident that our laws are used for their intended purposes and not brought up from the depths of history for purposes for which they were never intended. I thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate the extra time. Thank you.
You're welcome, Susan. Thank you for taking the time to both present it in written form and and by coming here personally to chat with us. Who's next? I see Penny raising her hand, but I don't know if she's next on the list.
So I just wanted to say that, yes, Counselor Ricketts is on the list. Mr. Norman is on the list. But we have about seven people in the queue right now, and I have Susan Hollins next to speak.
I'm sorry. I didn't want to speak about anything on the Friday. I just wanted to say two things.
Go ahead, Penny.
I saw that Mr. Norman wants to speak, but he wasn't sure if people could hear. But he is muted, so I just want him to know that if that's a problem, then he could just come down to my house, and I'll let him get on and testify from here. And David, I just wondered, like, the people like Susan who just spoke and had all those ideas, is there any way that she could forward that to you to send to us in council? Because I'm writing as fast as I can, but...
Everything that she presented is in writing. So she sent the written report to the committee today before she testified just now. So that can be forwarded to the council. I saw Chris Forghee said that she would help you in that as well. So that's... Yeah, you're welcome.
I'm back out. You don't have to call on me again. That's all I wanted.
I appreciate it. I just...
David, can you hear me, David?
Yes, I can now. Yes, wait your turn, though.
Okay, of course.
It's like everybody else. Okay. Otis, who's next?
Next up, we have Susan Hollins.
Oh, I'm sorry. I heard you say that. Susan, I'm going to start with five minutes, and if you need more time, I'll give it to you, but please go ahead.
I'll try to be brief. I was willing to write everything down. I did not, and I didn't know where to send it. And I want to say that I'm not sure which of my thoughts are worthy of a charter amendment, but I went through a few sections. I live at 11 Francis Street. In the school district section 4, under Section 2, it says the chair shall appoint all members of special and standing committees. And I just wanted to say that our policies are that that's subject to the full committee's approval. I don't know if that's important for the charter. And also, by policy, we have two types of committees, standing and advisory, which doesn't match up with what's in the charter, which is standing and special. I don't know if that's worthy. And the last sentence about the chairperson having other duties consistent with the charter, with ordinances, and votes of the school committee, and I didn't know if included should be state law or Roberts rules. I'm not exactly sure where the chair of the school committee is in state law, although I could look at it. But clearly, in Roberts rules, the body as a whole, the chair has a certain role, and everyone else has a role. Under Section 4, 5, Powers and Duties of the School Committee, there is one item that I think is important, and it has to do with the school grounds and school buildings. So I'd like to bring to your attention that, under Mass General Law, Chapter 43, Section 33, I'm going to quote, "that the school committee has control of all school buildings and grounds connected thereto." During my term as superintendent, this is a constant issue with the city. And even my experience now in the school committee, and I'm not here representing the school committee, it comes up all the time. A school committee is responsible for the school buildings and grounds, even though they're city buildings. It's in the law. So if somebody from the city wants to put in a playground, or something on the roof, or change the heating, or put in addition, or whatever, at the very least, it needs to come to the school committee that they know that it's happening. And it's an area where there's constant... My experience, my impression and my experience is that it's always misunderstood that the school committee has to know what's going on with the buildings and grounds that they have statutory responsibility for. So my recommendation is that be added to the three items you have because it's a constant, again, in my experience, confusion about whether the school committee needs to know what's happening with their buildings and grounds. Under Section 5, 2, page 19, there's a statement about the school committee will publish its budget. Since I've been on the school committee, we've had budgets that are published that the school committee hasn't seen. And there's a new construct that the budget is the superintendent's budget, and that's what gets posted. I never heard of that, and I don't agree with that. And I think it should be explicit in the charter to take out the word "ITS" and put in "school committee," that the school committee will publish the school committee's budget. I think that's important. I've had several years where, as a school committee member, I haven't seen the budget before it's printed. I think the public expects the published budget comes from the school committee. And lastly, on page 21, there's a section in the budget on interdepartmental transfers. And it states that the money can be transferred from department to department based on the mayor's approval. During my term as superintendent, it took me two or three years to find out that the city was... And not the mayor's, but the habit was just to transfer money from our budget and not tell anyone because of the statement. And I said, well, the school committee has to know what's coming in and out of its budget. So there is a practice set up now with a form where it's a warrant that's signed by the school committee called "transfer to the city," where the school committee can look at what's being transferred. But it seems to me that statement should say, "as endorsed by the school committee." So it's not unilateral that the mayor can transfer money out of the school district budget. Oops. I had one other question.
Please, please.
I've worked with a number of school committees and maybe 35 other governing boards, and I want to say a very successful communication process. When I was in New Hampshire, the budget committee of the city, the town, and the budget committee of the school committee met quarterly. And it wasn't getting permission from anyone to do anything. It was just sharing what was happening, what are the issues. And it seemed, I mean, there's always this tension. The school's not having enough money, the town not having enough money, and everybody questioning what's happening. Nevertheless, it was an exchange that seemed to me pretty healthy. You went in, and everybody tried to understand what's the grant revenue, what's not, what's the new demands of the state. And I don't see anything like that happening in Greenfield. And I think that would be healthy to put in. I know you have an education and finance committee on city council, but for my years on, prior as superintendent and even on school committee, I'm not sure we've ever met together. But I don't know how you work that in, but I think it's a very healthy practice for the two budget committees to meet on occasion, just for information sharing. That's it for me. Thank you. I can put any of those thoughts in writing.
Susan, thank you very much. I would be thrilled if you would put all your thoughts in writing. No, we're going to consider everything that people say. Please don't think one thing is more important than the other. I know you have yours, things that you thought were important, but please, all the things you said, including in the beginning, that section of the charter does need to be rewritten, and we're aware of it. And that's going to take... And so your suggestions are important at this time. So please send them in in writing. That would be really helpful.
Just let me know where to send it.
Yeah, on the... Okay, I can do that, but on our website, we have our own email, so there should be a place. Send it to the city clerk. How's that? Kathy Scott.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Who's next, Otis?
Next up, we have Rachel Gordon.
Okay, Rachel. Again, I'll start with five minutes, but as you can see, I'm being liberal about it. Go ahead.
Thanks, David. I don't think I'll take my whole five minutes. My name is Rachel Gordon. I live at 10 Eastern Avenue in Greenfield. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking my comment, and thank you also for all of your work on the charter review. I appreciate that. There's an immense amount of effort that must go into the... I know you're all very busy people already, so it is appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm hoping to see several specific changes to the charter, and I will put those in writing and send them to the committee. Tonight, I want to focus on just one of those, which is that I would really love to see a charter change that allows for ranked choice voting for local elections. I know that we'll probably ultimately have to go to referendum, but getting it into this committee's proposal, I think, is an important and probably necessary first step. If Question 2 passes statewide this fall, it will bring ranked choice voting to state and federal elections, but not local elections, I think is a point that I've heard many people be a little confused about. It's just as important, I think, if not even more important, to see ranked choice voting at the local level. It will encourage more people to run for office. It will allow voters a preferred candidate rather than trying to strategically vote against their least preferred candidate. We also, it happened in the mayoral election last year, where I think people spend a lot of angst and energy, you know, all across the political spectrum in Greenfield because they were trying to figure out how to vote in order to make sure that one of the three candidates would definitely not win, whichever candidate that was for them. And that involved a lot of people trying to figure out how other people might vote, how they should vote accordingly. I just imagine if everyone could devote that energy to simply supporting and campaigning for their own favorite candidate, knowing that we had a system in place by which the candidate most preferred by the most people would definitely win. And that system is ranked choice voting, and it's something that we could do here with this charter change. RCV is already in place in many cities across the country. It's been running smoothly and successfully in municipal elections for a long time. There's a wealth of evidence to show that it encourages more people to run for office, more diverse pools of candidates to run. It reduces negative campaigning, and it ensures majority support for the winners, all of which I think are perhaps particularly important and great things at the local level. There are also some changes that have been suggested in what I saw online in this charter that I don't support, such as of city councilors, and also making the mayor eligible to be elected chair of the school committee, as Susan mentioned. I'm excited to hear other proposals and suggestions that come up, and I'm looking forward to seeing where this process goes. So thank you all again.
Thank you. Thank you. And please, if you would be willing to put that in writing and send it off to the city clerk, that would be fantastic.
Will do. And David, is there a deadline for those written comments?
There's not a firm deadline, but we'd like to get a report in, you know, by the end of the year. And so the sooner, I mean,
Sure.
Going to start talking, this is the last piece, really. We've gotten information from everybody, and this public hearing is the last piece of it. And so it's been, I think, our goal to have this be the end, and then we're going to start meeting and talking about how we're going to organize all the suggestions to provide the report. So our next meeting is on the twenty-sixth of October, so if you can get in by then, that would be great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who's next?
Mr. Chair, next up, we have Pamela Goodwin.
Hi, Pamela. I'm going to start with five minutes and see how you can do with it, okay?
Sure. I think it'll be pretty quick. Thank you. And I also want to say I've listened to some charter work by you guys, and it's a lot of work, and I didn't get through that whole entire meeting. So thank you for serving the community. I am at fifty-four High Street, and it used to be a town, but when I moved away and came back, it became a city. So I have to preface this by saying I'm used to select boards in Shelburne Falls and Upton and Uxbridge. So this is a whole new situation for me, to be dealing with councillors and precinct people and a mayor. So I'm kind of learning. I want to speak on behalf of the RCV as well. I'm pretty active with RCV, the ranked choice voting. And I echo, I think it was Ms. Gordon that just talked. And I also wanted to, you know, Cambridge has had it for seventy years. It's really critical. And one other facet of it, besides, you know, instant runoff, is that I'm hearing that candidates can all get along and be compatible, and there's not this massive competition, which leads to divisiveness. So I'm all for that at this point. I also want to say, I've sat in on many school board meetings. I've talked personally with the current chair. I have to say that my instinct as a former teacher is that the mayor must have a lot to do. And so I would personally say I'm opposed to having the mayor also be the chair of the school board. And I'm not sure why that's a thought or why some people are thinking that would be very helpful. And I have spoken personally with Sheila Gilmore and Chris Forgy, and I have Penny Ricketts on my list to get a hold of. And I really appreciate calling these people at strange hours, and it's never a quick phone call. So therefore, I would agree with, I don't know how to pronounce her last name. Her first name was Susan. And I would agree that rather than making the city council smaller, that I would love to see it a little larger, or at least stay the same. I also am concerned about diversity and people of color and women. And, you know, like, the more the merrier, as far as I'm concerned. And unless people think it's just too unwieldy, you know, that would be the only reason that I think it needs to shrink down. So I'm curious about, you know, what the thought is on that. But personally, I'd like to see expanded, or at least not shrink down to eleven. And then, my last point is that for referendum questions, I hate the thought of people running all over the city looking for more and more signatures. I did that when I ran for office out in Upton. It's a lot of work. And I think to increase it is hampering the, you know, the idea behind why you would even want to have signatures on a petition. And I also question, because we're now into about the eighth month. I know ranked choice voting was able to use electronic signatures. So if, in fact, we don't want people going door to door, people reticent to do that, or you're not allowed to stand outside of the food stores, I would like to see if people would look into how you could electronically sign for something for those people who are really into isolating. And I thank you. I think I'm done.
Thank you very much. Again, or Pamela, if that's how you like to be called. Would you, if you want to put something in writing by the twenty-sixth and just send it in, it could be cryptic, but, you know, we've heard you, and it would be a reminder to us of all your ideas, and that would be helpful because the more people that we see on certain ideas, the more helpful it is to the committee to represent to the council how the public feels about the different changes that are being proposed. Thank you so much.
And can I ask, is Kathy Scott on the town? And I know she's the city clerk, so I get onto the town website to find her email, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
Next up, Catherine Golub.
Catherine. Okay, I'm going to give you five minutes to start, and you're on.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I just tried to put on my video. I don't think it worked. But I want to thank you all specifically for having your videos on. I've been to other meetings where public officials haven't had them on, and I just really appreciate the transparency to be able to see all of you. And also want to echo my gratitude to all of you for volunteering, just reading through the charter. What's a task, and just grateful to you for all of your time. I'm going to echo several different pieces that were raised previously. One is in support of ranked choice voting. I ask you to consider changing Greenfield's election systems to one of ranked choice voting so that, you know, rather than having to mark only their favorite choice, voters have the option to rank candidates in the order of choice. When this is used to elect a candidate like a mayor, ranked choice voting helps elect a candidate who better reflects the majority of voters. And when used to elect city councillors or school committee members, ranked choice voting more accurately represents the entire spectrum of voters. Amherst adopted ranked choice voting in their charter in 2018, and East Hampton adopted ranked choice voting in 2019. And both cities will begin implementing the system next year. I think this is a small change that can make a big impact and encourage you to include this change in the charter, the charter changes. That increases representational democracy. And echoing a few other people around representational democracy, I don't support the move to decrease the size of the council. And I also do not support the move to make the mayor eligible to chair the school committee. Neither of those, both of those moves would concentrate power in a fewer number of hands. I strongly support the move that Susan and the other signatures of her piece wrote about to make an ordinance review happen in fiscal year ending in two. We really, we need this so that we can make sure that ordinances that are prejudicial or antiquated or outdated are no longer appropriate for our times, that there would be a review of those and a proposal made to the city council to strike those from the ordinance list. Let me see. I also strongly support the changes to make it necessary for people who want to have a referendum to collect more signatures on the surface level. I don't, without yet last year's experience, I don't know that I would have supported that. But having gone through, I don't know if debacle is the right word, but having had folks gather all the signatures for the library in Safe City and the amount of energy that was then required for supporters of those two issues was just, in order to safeguard something that the city council had already passed, it was just, well, I do not want to see citizens have to repeat that process again. And therefore, I do support the, what Susan is, Susan Morgaftik is asking for, to have petitioners have to collect one hundred signatures from each precinct because that would mean that they would need to canvass their neighbors and not just get signatures from family and friends and demonstrate that they're willing to do, willing and ready to do the work to win a referendum campaign. And finally, also echoing Susan, the issue of the Public Safety Commission or a public, a police review board is a much longer conversation, one that I hope that the city council would need to take up and would require a lot more conversation for another time. But I do want to say that I support, at the very least, making the commission more representative by requiring that it include at least one woman, one person of color, one woman, and no more than one former member of the police or fire departments. I think that's all. Thank you so much for your time and for making this time for the public to give comment. And I will submit this in writing.
Thank you. That's what I was going to ask you to do, and you, five minutes on the dot.
It was not good.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, thank you very much. Otis, who's next?
Next up, we have Al Norman.
All right. Did you see that Jean Wall is asking for, she's on the list. Okay. Five, I'll start, I'll give you more time if you need it, but I'm going to start at five minutes. Oh, you have to, hold it out, hold it. We can't hear you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
So thank you, members of the commission. I actually submitted my comments in writing to you last June, specifically on the issue of citizen initiatives. This is in section seven dash seven and seven dash eight. As many of you may know, this is an important issue for me personally because in 1993, I was part of one of Greenfield's most remarkable referendum efforts, the defeat of a proposed Walmart store on the end of the French King Highway, which is now land that's owned by the Wissat Tinoag project. So I can see, I saw how pivotal a referendum could be and how important it could be to the future direction of Greenfield. And I believe still that it's a very important initiative. And I wanted to just give you a little bit of history, recent history, only going back twenty years. When, in, actually, start with, in 2018, I discovered that section seven dash eight, the citizens' referendum section, was actually, in error, entered into state law because it had to be approved by the general court. And what happened was, Chapter four forty-nine of the Acts of 2018 was signed by Governor Baker with what was known as a Scrivener's error. I spoke with attorney Wendy Sibison, who used to serve on the city council, and she said this was a clear Scrivener's error. They had passed into law language that did not exist in the actual language that was passed by the city council. And this created a citizens' referendum, section seven dash eight, which was completely gibberish. It made no sense at all. It had no clear process and had no clear relationship with seven dash seven. So I began to gather signatures and then realized that the signature petition section was broken. And I was going to, this was because I was very unhappy that the city council in its wisdom had decided to end the French King overlay district, which I think was a serious mistake and still is a mistake in exchange for something else that had no relationship to environment or zoning. The French King was left unresolved because I never finished with the initiative because, in fact, there was no legal way to do the initiative because of the garbled way it was presented. So let, that historically, in the 1999 version of the Greenfield Home Rule Charter, the section on referendum called for citizens to have to collect five percent of the total number of registered voters in the community. Now, that, according to our current number of voters in the town, that would be, five percent would be around five hundred and ninety-four signatures. That was high. That was a high level. Then in 2002, in 2002, the citizens' referendum called for five percent of the total number of voters. And that was to be collected within thirty days. And more recently, the suggestion that I put in back in June to you, to you all, was that the citizens of Greenfield would have to create a process, through a process with five very simple steps. And let me just describe them quickly. The first is commencement. And if you look at the, if you look at the referendum issues in many other towns, they all begin with a commencement, which has a very small number of people. And in my proposal here, it was ten voters of the city. These are not, these are, many of these ideas are carried forward from our current charter. But you would commence a petition for a referendum petition with ten voters. The second step is you refer to the city councillor who decides whether it may be lawfully proposed and lawfully enacted, adopted by the council. Thirdly, it gets submitted to the city clerk, who prepares blank forms for the citizens to go out and have X number of days. And in the case of the most recent submission from me, forty-five days, to gather two and a half percent of all the registered voters. Not those who voted in the last biennial election, but all the registered voters. Now, we now have, I'm going to say roughly eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty voters in Greenfield, actually around twelve thousand, but twelve thousand nineteen. But according to what I suggested to you last June, you would have to collect basically around three hundred signatures to be able to have a referendum. That's the third step, is the submission to the city clerk. And then, once the fourth step is action on petitions, after the petition with those, whatever number names, three hundred, is submitted to the, back to the city clerk, the city council has the option to pass it without change or to make a change in lieu of the initiative or to reject it. And if it's rejected, the citizens can have a right to go to the voters in the next biennial election or a special election. Now, the thing that got broke by the general court is that if you looked at section seven, seven and seven, eight, and if you look at them now, those two sections don't, they're supposed to inter, they cross-refer to each other. Section seven dash eight on referendum says in several places, go back and look at section seven point seven dash seven. But they leave out certain sections in the, in sections. So what I've done to just streamline it and to try to use current language, is I changed, seven would be an initiative, seven, eight would be a referendum, but they would have those same basic five steps that I just described. So it's the same process, whether you want to create something new in Greenfield, a new ordinance, or whether you want to challenge a vote that's been taken by the council, you have the same process that you follow. The numbers of signatures can differ, but the process is basically the same, and it works. It's complete. Section. So the end result is that I believe that what I suggested to you last June is feasible. It works. The number of signatures, the number of signatures in Greenfield has never been higher than around five hundred. I did want to end my comments by saying that in the Strike Two version that's on the internet, there were some comments submitted by a councillor that I thought were particularly harmful. One of the suggestions was that, basically, citizens would have to get, gather ten, twelve percent for a referendum, twelve percent of the registered voters in Greenfield. That would be around one thousand four hundred and fifty signatures. That is really over the top. We have never even approached anything, a third of that, in this town. And it would be, it would be an enormous burden for citizens. And it amounts, in my opinion, to throwing cold water on the idea of citizens ever having the nerve to challenge a vote of the city council, which is just so anti-democratic and so against the basic principles of citizens being able to petition their government for redress of grievance in amendment, one of the Constitution, Article One, that it's just anathema to me to a small town of seventeen thousand people, that we would require one thousand four hundred people to, names to be on a signature to be able to have a referendum. Had that happened, I don't, we never would have had a 1993 referendum. We wouldn't have had any referendums. It's an enormous hurdle. And the councillor said at the end of her, at the end of the statement, quote, "You either believe in a representative form of government or not. I want our citizens to be involved, but I believe that also needs to be tempered so that a special interest group is not speaking for the whole city." I'm sorry, but I think all of us are I'm sorry, but I think all of us are members of various numbers of special interest groups. All of us as citizens represent a special interest group. We have an interest in the future of Greenfield. And I don't want to see anyone, uh, castigated. I don't care whether they, for example, in the last referendum that was held, I saw, I saw, it's perfectly legitimate that people expressed their desire to have a library or not have a library. I didn't want people to be called out because they were on either side of that issue. It seems to me that that's what representative democracy is all about. And so I strongly object to anything that suggests, um, that we should make voters, uh, gather more than 300 or 400 signatures. I, I don't want to be living in, in a, in a city, uh, where we, uh, consider our city councillors as fallible. They're not. They never will be. I never will be. We need to have the ability for, for residents to, to voice their concern without, and I don't like the idea at all of people having to go to, uh, you know, 100 voters per precinct. I mean, you all, for those of you who ran, uh, people who ran as city councillors and had to gather 100 signatures, that's fine if you want to represent precinct two, three, four. But the idea that you would have to go and collect 900, you know, 100 names from every precinct is so arbitrary and capricious and so burdensome. And the total number is wrong. I mean, if you're going to talk about the number of signatures, maybe it should be 25. But I don't think, I don't think anyone should create, uh, roadblocks to citizens expressing their view. Finally, um, I did want to note for the record, I don't know where this idea of shrinking the council to 13 came from. I don't know what solution we're trying to solve with that. I don't know the impetus for that. I remember when we had representative town meetings and I remember our 27-member town council, um, shrinking it from 13, I think is totally wrong. Almost done, David. And finally, um, and I'm also against making the mayor the chairman of the school committee. Uh, my wife sat on the school committee with our current mayor when she was, uh, a member of the school committee. The two of them were on the school committee together. And she said to me, "I think, I think our current mayor understands how, how difficult the school committee chair position is and that you really don't have time to do both jobs well." I don't mind having the mayor ex officio or officio on the school committee, but not as chair. Um, and, uh, I also, um, uh, don't support the, uh, the, well, I already said that about the idea of 900 signatures. So, um, uh, I hope that we will finally correct the Scrivener's Error that the legislature made. Um, I hope that we can go with a reasonable, clean process for a referendum. And I thank you all for listening to my, uh, comments.
Thank you, Al. And we have, thank you very much. Okay, uh, next.
Next up, and the last person that I have signed up is Jean Wall.
Jean Wall.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to say. Thank you so much for the work you're doing on this committee. I cannot even imagine having to tackle such a huge project. Um, I feel strongly that some wording should be put into the charter that bans anyone from serving on a board and gaining financially from, from their service. I just don't think it's right. Uh, we're, we're all volunteers that work hard for the city and I, I don't think it's right to gain financially from that service. The other thing I would like to, uh, point out is I've been serving on the capital improvements committee for a number of years. And currently, we have one person from the planning and construction committee, which is how I'm on it, one person from Ways and Means, and the superintendent or someone from the schools. And it is not working, I don't think, to have some, the superintendent or someone from the schools voting on all of the departments, including their own, because the schools have a large amount of things that they want every year. And it just doesn't seem fair in the, trying to figure out what is good for the city and what is not. Thank you.
Jean, can you put that in? Would you mind putting that in an email? Thank you.
I'd do.
Thank you very much for your thoughts. Anyone else who is not on the list, um, just let us know through the chat room that you'd like to speak? All right, see, nobody else. Uh, I'll even be generous to say that if anyone has already spoken and feels like they want to have another minute or two to speak on what they've heard, uh, because I know everyone who came out tonight is very interested in the charter. I'd be willing to give you another minute to say something. Okay, because I know people did, I know that people did speak, uh, they did, uh, dovetail with each other, which I thought was excellent. Um, ideas came up and then people commented on it. Okay, so at 7:04 PM, I'm going to close the public hearing. At the same time, I'm going to again thank all of you who came out tonight to speak. We're very interested in what you have to say. Obviously, we have a daunting task. But again, I want to, I want to let you all know. We will make recommendations, but we are advisory. At the end of the day, it's going to be up to the city council to take up our recommendations and decide how they're going to proceed with them. But I know that they'll be happy that we've done all this hard work because you can see already how hard the work is. And I don't think the city council would be able to take this much time to focus on this type of work. So this way, if we could give the city council some good recommendations, reasons why, um, that would be excellent. So before people disappear, or if you want to wait till the end, but just, um, our next meeting is at 5:30 on October 26th. And you can keep watching the meetings. Uh, I've divided the group into, uh, authors of the different sections so that they can help, um, you know, monitor all the requested changes. I'm very sorry about the confusion about what was on the posting. No change, anything that was in, it, all we've done is highlight all the changes. That's all, that's as far as we've gotten. There have been no recommended changes, except to the extent that people have written in and said, "I'd like to decrease. I'd like to do this. I'd like to do that." So, and your, your suggestions, all of you who came in tonight, those also would have been listed on my, on the document that went out as suggested changes. So we'd like to give everybody suggested changes at least a light of day. And then we will, as the committee, make this the recommendations, as I said. So again, thank you. Um, on our agenda, there's motions. There are no motions tonight. Discussion, I don't think, I don't think we need to discuss anything unless a member feels that, and especially since, uh, Alan is not able to speak with us. Uh, new business, old business, and the next meeting's on the 26th. Um, I want to thank everybody again, and can I have a motion to adjourn?
So I move?
All right. I need to, you need to unmute the members of the board, Otis, so I can hear.
All right.
Um, all right. So that's your move. Otis moved second, second for adjourning.
I'll second.
Seconded by John Lund.
All in favor, just by, I'll go through the list. Um, councillor Gilmore. Do you, do you vote to adjourn? Is she still there? I assume she does. Maybe she's already.
Um, David, I actually just saw on the chat that Sheila had a question. So maybe before we vote to adjourn.
Oh, absolutely.
If, if we can hear.
So let's hold off on the vote. I won't take the, uh, vote. Uh, Sheila, go ahead.
Thank you. I froze, so I couldn't even interrupt.
Okay. I saw, I saw.
So my question, so you, you, we've talked about assigning different sections of the charter that we're going to start drafting and working on. Um, there are some issues that some of our neighbors have brought up that are not addressed in the charter right now. Um, should we just draft proposals individually and submit them to you as the chair so that they can be considered at the October 26th meeting? Or is there some other way you want to handle that?
So are you saying that outside of the, so you're saying that there are people that you know that haven't sent in comments through the official channels, have not participated in this hearing, but yet have said things to you that you want to include in, in the changes that you're, you've been assigned to work on?
Um, that's not exactly what I was asking. There are some people who have brought some things up that didn't come up tonight. Um, specifically, I am also a fan of ranked choice voting. So if you wanted to see an RCV, um, proposal, is that something, do you want us to send it to you? Do, or how, how do you want to handle?
I see.
New?
Um, well, if you, if, if, again, thinking that what you're saying is that you're kind of a conduit for other people's ideas, um, you can present to all of us some recommendations that you feel are important in the way that the community has done it. The assignments for all of you was actually to take on the hard task of, of whatever sections you were assigned to, going through all the information we have and helping us organize it and edit into a form so that we can, uh, submit it to the clerk's office. I didn't think the clerk was going to immediately take over headlining everything. I didn't want that to be done this early. But if you feel like, if you personally, uh, support ranked choice voting and you have other people who feel that, uh, for reasons that either have been articulated tonight and echoed, or you want to give other reasons, just submit something to the group yourself, like everyone else has. And that way, we have a compilation of all the recommendations so that when we go through the discussion, we'll see, you know, that Sheila herself brought it, brought up some recommendations or others, you know? I don't want it to be that, I don't want, I'm not asking for you to, in your chore of, um, of taking on the certain sections that I've assigned to you, putting in your personal stuff without letting the whole group know, like everyone else has, that that's something that you want to see the committee consider.
No, I think what I'm asking is, do you want us to draft language for the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
If that was a simple question, that's the simple answer. But I, I don't remember what section you have, but it would, yes, that would, yes. In generally speaking, that'd be great. Anybody else? Okay, back to the motion to adjourn. There's a motion, uh, made and seconded. I want to go through the roll call. Councillor Gilmore.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Forgie.
Yes.
Councillor Wheeler.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Alan. Where is he? He can nod. And David, yes. If you nod, Alan will know you want to adjourn. Finally got to participate, uh, that manner. Thank you. Everybody, uh, submit things, uh, as soon as you can. And from here on in, it's going to be a lot of work. We have to really organize all this stuff. Uh, and I'm very grateful for everyone, again, who came, uh, who came out and, and spoke. So, good night, everybody.